Thank you. Uh, we'll call please.
Mike Colman. Ms. Harvey.
Here.
Bill Henderson.
Here.
Joe Pucci.
Here.
You know, Capitelli.
Yeah.
PJ Bobb, the bathroom. You know, Lady Cuslin?
Here.
Sister Helen Dunnett. And you're here for the site.
Here.
Jeremy Devore Coleman.
Here.
Sergeant Jerry James.
Here.
Attorney Chief Volchelio.
Here.
Officer Duvall Stilo.
Here.
Um, before we get to the visitors, I want to turn the meeting over to Mayor Cogan, please.
Good evening. We're presenting a proclamation to PJ from PJ's catering this evening as this is her 40th year in catering and her actual anniversary date is November 18th, so you all have time to stop in that day. When PJ was growing up, she knew that she did not have any desire to attend college, so after much discussion with her parents, they finally agreed to let her open up a business, which she did in Scott Township on Venetian Road. She found a storefront and while her father was remodeling the place, her mother taught her how to bake her pastries, cookies, and cakes from the family recipes. Her mother worked with her in Bridgeville and her mother had a stool facing the front door, the register, and she could also have full view of what was happening in the kitchen. And the crew began to call that the Frozonest. We're honored to have her here this evening because she has done so much for the community. When Ivan came, she was out delivering meals and currently, when we had that flood, she also was out delivering meals to those that were in need. And she always has the Veterans Day when she gives complimentary meals to all of our veterans. So whereas upon graduation, Pam was determined to start her own business in the food industry with the help of her father building cabinets and remodeling the storefront, her mother and grandmother played a part in the kitchen, creating delicious homemade meals. Thus, the business PJ's came into being. In 1988, after 10 years in Scott Township, she had been so successful, she relocated and brought the building at 700 Bowery Hill Road in Bridgeville and history has been made. Whereas Pam is a very personable lady and her mother Joan worked with her for 37 years, she has never had to advertise for business because it always freely came to her. In 2004, when the storm Ivan flooded the surrounding area, many families and homes were devastated with their losses and that's when Pam loaded up her vehicle and took the food to the fire malls and to other homes, to residents on the street that lost almost everything and she handed them free meals and soups to all of them. This has been going on for years. Ever since that devastating day, PJ's Deli has been serving the community in generosity and we are so proud that she is still with us. Pam has a significant impact on dedicating her time and efforts to all her clients and culinary skills. Therefore, in order to honor and commend Pam Lee for her many achievements and longevity, I proclaim November 18th as the 40th anniversary day for PJ's Deli in the borough of Bridgeville.
Then here's a picture.
Thank you. Also Pam's passion is building in her dining room a village for Christmas and she has not only a football stadium, but miniature players, the Steelers versus the New York Jets. And if you want to see the videos, they can be found on YouTube at Pam J's 100. Thank you God bless you. Thank you so much.
Right now, I'm thoroughly hungry. All right, uh, our first visitor, uh, well, please, you know.
Thank you. The Bus Shelters. I understand that the contract is up for renewal. There is a shelter at the intersection of Silva and Bowery Hill and for many years, the residents of Passavento, that area have mentioned that the shelter obstructs their view as they're departing Silva onto Bowery Hill Road. While the lines of sight are within the acceptable standards and frankly, if you move up and you are careful, you can see, you know, to make a left turn or for that matter, a right turn on Bowery Hill. With the amount of traffic that is present, it may be beneficial for the community to, as we're renewing the contract, ask that this shelter be moved or removed. While there is use for this shelter and I would hope that it could stay, uh, its location makes it difficult for residents. Again, just moving it further away from the intersection might be of some assistance. And that, I hope all will have a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas and light up night on December 7th, otherwise known as Winter Blast.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Council recognizes Mary Wise.
Very short, very sweet. I bring it again. I just want to ask council, please, to remind Penn lot that at least one resident in Bridgeville still would like to see a major highway from out there in Upper St. Clair, across through part of Southland, onto I-79 and if they ever finish 43, 43. And that's all I'm asking of you tonight. Thank you. I'll talk to you later about something else. Thanks.
Dennis Corrie.
If you guys aren't sick of hearing everything about probable storm, Lori. I'm sorry, Lori. She got blamed for everything. But anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody again and I go a little bit of aid for the public work and the fire department for all their help. I guess Lori can take care of the public work and Bill, you can take care of this, I guess.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
That's right.
Every month for about two years, I've come to this meeting and heard Mary Wise, a charming, lovable lady, talk about her solution to the traffic congestion problem, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, what Mary has never told the public is what caused the traffic congestion, which was primarily an attitude or an official policy of members of Borough Council going back many years. It involved Borough Council turning down seven different recommended solutions and seven different traffic engineers on how to solve corridor problems. Turned down two offers by Penn lot to help out. But because none of the details will ever be in any newspaper, I just want to make it clear how simple, relatively simple, the solution to the traffic congestion problem is. This obviously is Bridgeville. These are the, Bridgeville was here 100 years before any of the other communities around here. All of the, all the roads lead to Bridgeville. This is Washington Pike, North Washington Pike, South. Despite this network of seven, probably 25 to 30,000 vehicles, the section of road in Bridgeville is only two lanes wide. What Penn lot, oh, sorry, what all those traffic engineers, actually, they started in 1969. It's through the Allegheny County Panhandle Commission recommended that Bridgeville just make Shady Avenue 220 yards longer so that Shady Avenue would become, excuse me, a three-lane wide, one-way street heading south, which would relieve Washington Avenue a three-lane road going north. And in a sense, it would make this, this section four lanes wide. This section could be, it would be up to someone else. I'll always be being interested in city planning and the condition of life of all people in Bridgeville. I'm really, I wasn't too concerned about vehicles getting passed to shopping centers in Cogge to Bridgeville because I doubted very many of them would shop here. But I would like to point out that, excuse me, that the traffic flow from Buffalo Park and Upper St. Clair all would tie in very nicely to that system. And that incidentally, I might mention this to you if you get a chance, the fact I heard the rumors about the two-way couple over the years became outrageous. All of the people on Shady Avenue notified that their homes would be taken down and none of them would be, we didn't touch. Excuse me, the people on this dotted green area here is the defined central business district of Bridgeville right now. Most of the people on Shady Avenue don't realize that their homes are all in central business district. If such, if this plan would occur simply by double or quadrupling the number of cars going past the properties they own, would at least double the value of property if they ever decided to sell. That includes the American Legion too. Excuse me, these are, to give you an idea of what a three-lane Shady Avenue looked like, if you get a chance, take a look at this. What that would have done 40 years ago, and can still be done, it would have doubled the size of the business district, doubled the tax revenue income. There would be the possibility of erecting 10-story high-rise apartments, which many communities have done across the country. Because what that does is that establishes, that brings thousands or hundreds and thousands of residents right into the center of your business district who walk to your stores and don't get in the corny middle of shopping center. I'm mentioning that because it brings, because of your moving towards some sort of solution about the, how to solve the Baldwin Street traffic congestion problem, I'm totally opposed.
That's not about traffic.
You know, it is about traffic.
No, no, you're saying that that plan is there to solve the Baldwin Street traffic congestion problem and that is not what that project's about.
Well, my point is.
No, I'm just saying, that's what you're saying.
Okay, that's all. What I'm saying is, the proposal that I've made does involve getting four lanes of traffic. Right now, the proposal being made by the consultant, who's surely, who's sure a very capable person, but her plan doesn't apply to Bridgeville. Bridgeville, the people in Bridgeville, number one, can't afford it. Number two, the people in Bridgeville, as I mentioned to you at the last meeting, have an average income of $55,000 a year. The data that I've gotten from the Canadian Library within the past two weeks, 50%, the people in, the average family in Bridgeville is paying 50% more taxes to the community than the people in the communities around us. It's ridiculous. And what the present, with the proposal that you're considering from Baldwin Street will do is it will wipe out a potentially, what is potentially the best business district in Bridgeville, its family level line. It's the, and incidentally, the, this is, this is the overall plan. This is just a drawing that you've seen several times about where it could look like. The 1980 Department of Environmental Protection Plan, by the way, doesn't even mention what you're doing. It simply says the cause of the Bridgeville flooding problem is the Crick Channel isn't wide enough and isn't deep enough as well as the five bridges. I know you guys have gotten, you've seen the small opening under the bridges as being a cause, but tell me something. The last time I was here, I asked you if you were going to adopt the precise plan that Carol proposed to you guys. And I noticed tonight on your agenda, you have a motion or you're entertaining a motion to pass that on. I want to know if you have.
No.
May I?
No.
There's nothing on your agenda regarding that.
Good, I'm glad.
Well, where did you see it?
I misread it. I thought I sort of read it on here tonight. No, that's fine. My, my point is, the, to, my point is modify the plan greatly. This is, I'm proposing. I want to ask you something else. Have you guys heard anything from, have you, have you presented your proposal to DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers yet? What about the guys from the University of Pittsburgh who are doing a study?
Students.
Yeah.
It's a student. It's a student.
Assignment.
You don't have assignment.
No, it's, it's five students. It's about a study from what I was told.
Well, what he told me was it's his assignment.
Well.
And he's, and he's been, and he's been in contact with me and they have been with him, accompanying him, so.
Good, I understand. Tell me, Lori, did they tell you, I heard last week that they have built a model of the watershed area in Upper St. Clair, Buffalo Park, and part of Bridgeville that's causing the Bridgeville problem. Have you, have you, they addressed, have you know anything about that?
They haven't communicated anything to us at this time.
Okay, well, my point is, I just want to caution you that I'm not, I'm not going to stand by and allow you to do something that would so drastically mess up the basic economy of the community.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Mike, can I just confirm?
Sure.
That the study he's referring to was for flood control, not for traffic.
That's right.
Okay. Well, let me respond to that.
No, that's, that's, I was verifying, I was talking to him.
Yeah, we're.
No, the only thing I would let me respond to.
I wasn't asking you anything, Bob.
I, I am curious.
You said you were done.
Excuse me, I want to make another statement. My plan, my plan differs from the one that you're looking at because I have four columns of traffic moving east and west of Washington Pike. The consultants only has two. That's an enormous difference.
Council recognizes Ray Airholtz.
I want to thank you for installation of the stop signs at the intersection of Winfield and Lafayette. They are working and they're, we've been monitoring the traffic at peak times. I'd say probably about 95% successful, the other 5% between a rolling stop. We're not quite stopping completely yet, but that's a matter of time, but the flag is on there, it's definitely helped. During the peak times, I'd say we've seen a backup of about six cars going from Winfield onto Bank Street, but they rolled through as far between stop signs, both stop signs at the intersection of Lafayette and on Bank Street with no backup onto Chartier Street. So I'd say that the stop signs are working and traffic is slowing down. Also, another side I'd like to thank the, the public works as far as their work, as far as the leaf pickup and the brush, doing excellent job around the city bridge. I'll comment on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And our last visitor, John Duncan.
Yeah, John Duncan, Warner Street. I just wondered if there was anything with the hillside and anything coming up.
We actually were over looking at it.
Yeah, I saw a barrel there and a big, a barrel mouth, a big hole. Just wondering if there was anything. We'll, we'll talk offline about that, Mr. Duncan, okay? We'll talk to you offline about this. And I just have one thing, do we still have the street sweeper?
It's, it's done now. It, the, the leaf pickup and brush grinder program is going on now. The leaf pickup follows the street sweeper's schedule and the brush grinder also.
Are we still on the schedule for, I mean, James Street Warner? I haven't seen it for years, the, the street sweeper.
It should, it should be. James and Warner are part of the, he comes on at 4:00 in the morning to do midtown and he comes over that way too, so that's probably why you haven't seen it. He starts at 4:00 AM for that area.
Okay, yeah, particularly in front of that dumpster there, it really gets to be a windlass weight on the bed, you know, where I know. All right, thanks.
Thank you, John. All right, can I have a regular meeting?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know, I'm sorry to have something to say, but I, I just want to, I, I'm in St. Shady, I live on Baldwin Street and I just want to say about Pam, that's why I didn't notice what was going on. My sister who lives in Arizona appreciated what Pam was doing for us and she called her to send her some money, but Pam refused it, saying this was all on her, she didn't run the dividend, she didn't take any money out. And the other thing is that I want to thank the people at the Methodist Church for what they did in, after that.
Sure. Thank you very much. All right. Minutes, motion to Borough Council regarding the minutes of October 8, 2018, regular meeting as submitted. Bruce?
Second.
Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number one, Baldwin Street Backflow Preventer Contract. Motion to Borough Council regarding the remit of current estimate number one, Baldwin Street Backflow Preventer Contract to Osiris.
Osaris.
Sorry, sorry about that. Enterprises in the amount of $47,207.88 for work completed to date. Yes, and have been reviewed and approved by engineer sites.
So, I'll second.
Page Dr. Chief Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Garbage recycling bids, contract years 2019, 2021, with option years 2022 to 2023. Bids were advertised and publicly opened on Friday, October 12th, 2018 at 10:00 AM in the council chambers for the garbage recycling bid. Contract years 2019 to 2021 with option years 2022 and 2023 with the following bid results. Garbage unlimited each week, recycling unlimited each week, cost per household per year. Bear with me on this one, people. Westmoreland Sanitary Landfill, LC, year one, $192.91, year two, $196.77, year three, $200.71, option year four, $204.72, option year five, $208.82. Waste Management of PA, year one, $10.84, year two, $223, year three, $217.32, option four, $2.23, option five, $232.80. VFI Waste Services, year one, $205.68, year two, $211.80, year three, $218.16, option year four, $224.76, option year five, $231.48. And Valley Waste Services Incorporated, year one, $219.24, year two, $225.84, year three, $232.68, option year four, $239.76, and option year five, $246.96. Now, the, and then for the E-waste, for E-waste and the household waste contractor, Westmoreland Sanitary Landfill, year one, $210.91, year two, $215.13, year three, $219.44, option year four, $223.82, option year five, $228.32. Waste Management of PA, year one, $217.80, year two, $219.96, year three, $224.40, option year four, $223.12, and option year five, $240.36. VFI Waste Services, year one, $220.68, year two, $227.40, year three, $234.36, year, option year four, $232.16, option year four, $250.80. And Valley Waste Services Incorporated, $233.40, year two, $239.64, year three, $246.48, option year four, $253.56, and option year five, $260.76. What?
Can I ask a question before you make your motion?
Sure.
So, are we first deciding if we're going to do the E-waste program?
Yes, you should decide whether you're going to do the garbage and recycling unlimited each week or the garbage and recycling unlimited each week and the household waste and E-waste program. And accept that and then decide whether you're going to take, to take option four and option five.
Just as a comment, as far as the E-waste, it's going to save us $37,000 at least.
Almost 38.
Yeah, almost 38. Is it worth considering not having that as part of the contract with down the road having, you know, possibly a spring and a fall or some type of, where a collection on a Saturday to, it'll cost us money, but it won't cost us $38,000. So that can be a way that we could save on it.
Right. And pass that on to the residents.
Right.
Because these costs are passed on to the residents.
Absolutely.
I want to bring that up before you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That said, Mike, I'd make a motion to accept the low bidder for, without the.
The.
Recycle.
House waste.
Yes, house waste. And I would like to make the motion to accept year four and five based on pricing. Seems like it'll be about efficient. Yes.
Let's get one motion at a time. Myself, myself, I mean, I, second year of motion.
All those, Bill and Nina, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries for Westmoreland Sanitary Landfill without the E-wastes and the household waste.
Yeah, yeah, the motion.
Motion for.
So I make a motion to, to accept year four and five on the contract just based on pricing.
George Rudi and Chris Dowditch for the option years, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, Sean. Labor agreement, full-time police officers in the borough of Bridgeville. Motion to Borough Council regarding the labor agreement between the full-time Bridgeville Borough Police Officers in the borough of Bridgeville for the calendar year 2019, 2020, 2021. Agreement includes the following, three-year contract, wage increase 2.5, 2.5, and 2.5%. Declaration of paragraph 7 under Article 11, retirement, continuing expiration of a drop pension. Article 21, right? Yeah, 21. My Super Bowl numbers here. Payroll deduction, verbiage change due to the legality of the Fair Share Act. Article 24, substance abuse policy, final policy, final agreement, year extended. And Article 14, insurance, UPMC add to the choice of medical insurance.
So.
Bill Henderson?
Second.
And Joe Klosman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I just want to thank our Public Safety Committee and our police department for working together. This is always a long process to get through, and thank you on both sides of the table. Thank you very much. Proposed ordinance number one zero zero three, motion to borough council regarding proposed ordinance one zero zero three, an ordinance amending the Borough Legal Stormwater Management Ordinance number nine three nine, an ordinance that establishes stormwater management standards, site plan requirements, operation and maintenance responsibilities for prohibited certain activities, and provides a certain exemption, enforcement fees, expenses, and penalties for violation thereof. Elegated kind of requires the ordinance to be in effect by December first, two thousand eighteen. The ordinance has been duly advertised.
I'll move.
Nina Richelli?
I'll second.
And Bill Henderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Proposed ordinance number one zero zero four, motion to borough council regarding proposed ordinance one zero zero four, an ordinance suggesting the members' contribution to the police pension fund. Per the actual recommendation conducted in October two thousand eighteen, police pension contribution shall be lowered from seven percent to two point five for the months of November, December, two thousand eighteen. As of January one, two thousand nineteen, member contribution shall be raised to be maximum permitted, maximum permitted by Act six hundred, eight percent. Review of the fund will be conducted in September nineteen regarding additional adjustments to the contribution. The ordinance has been duly advertised. Joe Ritchie?
Second.
Richelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Lamar Bus Shelter Agreement, motion to borough council regarding updated agreement between Lamar Advertising of Pittsburgh and Ridgeville Borough. The agreement has been updated to remove one shelter on Dewey Avenue that has zero usage and a five hundred dollar per shelter per year annual cash guarantee, years one through ten. The expiry contract includes included seven shelters at seven hundred and fifty dollars. Lamar proposes six shelters at five hundred dollars per year due to a decrease in advertising sales of the shelters per section twelve of the agreement. Solicitor McDermott have reviewed the document.
Yeah.
Nina? And Joe Ritchie, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Current estimate number three, two thousand eighteen sanitary sewer repair contract A. Motion to borough council regarding the remit of current estimate number three, two thousand eighteen sanitary sewer contract A, to the end of construction in the amount of forty-three thousand, fifty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents for the work completed to date. Engineer Sykes reviewing this middle, and will provide that to you. What she is doing. Nina and Bruce Dowditch, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Calendar year, like, two thousand nineteen budget workshop meeting advertisement. A motion to borough council approving the advertisement of the budget workshop meeting to be held on Tuesday, November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, at six PM in the council chambers.
I'll move.
Joe Ritchie?
Second.
And Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Calendar year, two thousand nineteen proposed budget advertisement. Motion to borough council approving the advertisement of the calendar year, two thousand nineteen proposed budget, to be available for public inspection on Monday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. This advert will be, will meet and exceed the ten-day public review required per the Borough Code.
I'll move.
Who was that?
Joe.
Joe. And Bruce, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Billis, motion to borough council regarding the November two thousand eighteen bill list.
I'll move.
Second. Joe and Bill, Joe Klosman, Joe Ritchie, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payroll, motion borough council approving the payrolls of November sixteenth, twenty-three, thirty, and December seventh, two thousand eighteen. Bruce Dowditch?
Second.
And Nina Richelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly reports, a motion to accept and pay any commissions due to the October two thousand eighteen real estate tax collector report.
So.
Bruce?
I'll second.
And Joe Ritchie, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the September two thousand eighteen financial report.
I'll move.
Bill Henderson?
No, Joe.
Oh, that was Joe, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
And Bill Henderson, there you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the October two thousand eighteen police report.
So.
Bill Henderson?
Second.
And Joe Klosman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Real estate tax refund, a motion to, a motion of the borough council regarding the following: real estate tax refund due change in assessment as requested by real estate tax collector year two thousand eighteen, block three point two, FC, that's fifty-one, amount of two hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents, to events car, all those in favor? Or is there a motion?
So.
All those in favor? All right.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Community reports, administration.
No reports.
Hi, Joe.
We're proud to say that by the donations from the community, what was the final amount? Approximately, it was like eighty thousand? It was around eighty thousand dollars that was donated by the community to that relief fund. We have sent all checks out to the different people to, in the amount, and I'm sorry, I don't have it right now.
Four fifty-four cents.
Four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents per unit, which I thought was, we didn't even think we'd get anywhere that close. So that is really a very big thing, I think, in the community, that they got around it and was very proud to, to help, help the people that went through that issue. Yeah, yeah, thank you to all the people that helped in that cause. As Mike went through, we're having a finance workshop on November twentieth, and for the finance committee, I'd like to have a, a meeting next week to just go over that one last time.
Can you speak here this week?
I'm sorry, this week, excuse me, thank you. This week to, to go over those numbers one more time prior to that meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. Parks and Rec.
Thanks, Mr. President. As of today, the parks are still open, the water is on, but we're in the process of having the water shut off in the parks due to oncoming winter weather. Folks, get some nice day, the best bet would be to look to Cook School Park. The facilities will be closed, but it's easy to get into as soon as the charters and the Glock, which is pretty much closed down. Over the winter, construction will be started and completed on the restroom and Charterhouse Park. We're going through paperwork with the county, they have to have a construction meeting with the contractor, and our, Mr. Sykes has to meet with them and get things rolling, so work should be completed through the winter, and we'll check on, make sure there's no leaks in the spring, and it should be good to go. And not related to parks, but I'd like to thank fire department and employees at the borough for the Halloween parade we had. Weather was terrible, but we had a little decent turnout, at least we had good time. Hopefully the sun will shine next year, but fire department and Cheryl and the girls, they do a good job on that every year, so I appreciate it from them. That's all I have.
Thanks, Joe. Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo my friend Joe over here, I have on my note here that Public Works winterized the parks, so I guess they are very close to be close. So, really, the, the rest of the item, they are regular maintenance to the borough, such as winterize things, to get ready for the snow, we are very ready, I hope it never comes. Up to twelve inch, we can handle, after that, we try not, who knows? Nobody knows. But we are prepared, we have enough salt, thanks to Lori, and the, she's, it's funny, she wore salt in July, just so we have it. I have to thank Public Works for the nice job they did to the Christmas light at the park. I thought the park looked beautiful, as usual. And it's a lair, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Nina. Public Safety, Bill?
Just a couple things, Mike, we're going to continue to monitor Winfield Lafayette up there with those temporary stop signs, and appreciate working with Ray and the residents up there to address their concerns. We're getting feedback from not only the residents up there, but, but other folks that experience that, and we're monitoring the traffic path. Also, again, my thanks to Sergeant James and the rest of the police department for professional negotiation, that's always tough. We're proud of our police department, we try to remain fiscally responsible and, and at the same time, make sure that we're, we're taking care of our, our folks that keep us safe, so thank you again.
Thanks, Bill.
Madam Mayor. Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans of our community. And on Friday, I was invited to Centos Corporation for their celebration, Oshkosh presented them with an award for their voluntary protection program, and they presented me with a book, which is very interesting on how the company came about, and as soon as I'm finished reading it, I intend to turn it over to the Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sergeant James, you have anything?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Tom?
I got nothing in my brain.
Gotcha. Engineer Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a report, unless you have any questions, we'll move on with the Green Light Go, which was not part of that report. We opened bids on Friday morning for the adaptive signal upgrades. The borough had received a grant in the amount of two hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred two dollars and fifty cents for construction costs. The bids we received were over that amount, we had three bids with a low bid of three hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents. The three intersections in which the adaptive signal upgrades were to occur were Washington Avenue and Station Street, Washington Avenue and Bao Gil Road, and Washington Avenue and Presley Road. In review of the scope of work with my traffic engineers, we felt that it would be good to eliminate the Washington Avenue and Presley Road intersection from the scope of work, and since that intersection is already interconnected with the traffic signals at the entrance to Charters Valley, Shop and Center, Cross and Anderson Equipment. So therefore, we're asking for a motion to be made to award the Green Light Go Adaptive Traffic Signal Project to Broadener Technical Services in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents, and complete a Green Light Go grant for the next cycle, which will be due January eleventh, two thousand nineteen, to secure funds for the intersection of Washington Avenue and Presley Road.
Need to have a formal motion? We need to have a formal motion. Yes, we need a motion. So.
Second.
Bill Henderson and Nina? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. R. Chief, Joe Chili?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple minor things. I like to, in our newsletter we have put out, I like to just reiterate it here, thank you to a lot of the residents that have upgraded their house numbers on their houses by reading the letter. It's been big help for us, for the three of us sitting here. But there's still some out there that need it, and it'll come. And also, we added a new thing this year, is adopting a fire hydrant, especially come winter time, shoveling it out, you know, so that's in there. And then during the summer, if you have bees around it or porches, please expose it, because we don't know where they are for the growing.
Chief, you sending out letters or knocking on a door if your numbers aren't large enough? Just let them know?
No, a lot of people been doing it through the newsletter right now.
But if you see one now, now that people are starting to address it, you, because maybe my numbers are bigger.
We got the building of the borough because of the ordinance. There is an ordinance.
The ordinance states that if, if they replace it, they need to replace it up to four inches, but it doesn't state that they have to replace it.
Yeah. We have a lot of, if they have them, and they're putting them on, so we're getting there.
They should do for their own protection, really.
Well, I was just curious, like, I don't know if mine are large enough, I think they are, but I don't know.
I think it's four inches is the minimum. Is it three or four?
The ordinance says four.
Four. Yeah, I mean, that's the essence, I know we all say that, nighttime's the worst. You've got to put them where we can see them and don't make them match the house. That's all I got for that.
May I add something that may be useful?
Sure.
I know when I was in Charterhouse Valley, a part of our interact club, we went around and actually put spray painted glue with labels in it, all the addresses along the streets, on the corners, on the sidewalks. That's a proposal we might be able to talk to the school district about, because I know they did this as a service project, and it worked out.
Yeah.
I know we did that in Scott Township and Carter.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Southbridge, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. President. We actually have something to meet. Just want to let you guys, there's some exciting information that's been released in cardiac arrest survival rates, in the last research, batch of research that's been done. So, the initial phase of that is kind of a cue of what we've been doing, kind of come in line with those policies and the research. But it always has been a important factor in survival is community CPR. And in the past, community CPR used to be a three- to four-hour class, and you had to take tests, and it was very labor-intensive just to go out and do that. They've now released community CPR, which is basically hands-only CPR, and takes ten, fifteen minutes to learn. So, after we're done with this initial, initial phase, and, you know, we're going with the police department and the fire department for a quick response to make sure somebody gets their pass, but we want to get as much of the community trained in this, you know, hands-only, pressure-only CPR. So, in the coming, coming months, we may be looking for some support and some, you know, efforts on the borough to try and get the community out there, get them involved in doing these hands-only CPR classes, so that we can get as many people as we can trained in that, doing small, you know, classes on a day-to-day, things like that, or bring them, you know, after the meeting, a borough meeting, stick around and do people with, that's in months coming, but we, you know, that's kind of on our radar to try and do that for the community, to provide the best care to everybody.
Sounds good, good stuff. Thank you very much. Historical Society?
Yes. Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank a lot of organizations in this community who have really done a fantastic job since June twentieth. And on behalf, I wasn't flooded, but on behalf of everyone who was, thank you, everyone here who really helped tremendously. I'm going to talk very shortly about tomorrow night. Tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the old railroad station, we will be talking again about George Washington. That is tomorrow at seven at the railroad station. The very last Tuesday of this month, and that's after Thanksgiving, I'm getting Thanksgiving everywhere but where it is on the calendar, but there is a man who's going to talk about the horrendously damaging, whatever you want to call it, when a zinc company, in addition to all the other companies on the river, the Mauna River, got caught in a problem with the over and whatever. Couldn't even see the track, but not the light, outside light, at all, in the daytime, like nighttime, no, could not. But it was a very tragic event, and that's what the program is going to be about. I guess we were lucky, we only got green or orange snow or whatever that was toxic in our days, but Dunora had twenty-eight deaths from problems such as. I also want to say we have Christmas cards for sailors. They are real honest, they're about Christmas cards from a very old photograph of the railroad station, of a library building at that time, and a beautiful, they have five, in a band bundle, at five dollars for five, so it's very lit long. We also have a drawing of Ken Ruth Mix, pen and ink, and that is on newspaper, and those will be for sale also. But most important, I have to bring this up. We are receiving more and more and more emails every day, every week, and four weeks ago, one came in from a woman in Ohio, wanting to know what the Bridgeville Borough knew, what they were doing for, her great, I think great aunt, I'd have to dig the papers out again tomorrow, who became a nurse, and in World War One, went to France and was there until after two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, no, nineteen, I'm sorry. I've tried to get in touch with the American Legion, I finally did get in touch with them, they're hunting for anything and everything. We've had our guru computer down in Texas trying to find anything and everything he could find out about these, this woman, who did serve in France in World War One. Her name is a really unusual name, it's Jones, J-O-N-E-S, and I distinctly remember going to call on them up on Elm Street, Bridgeville, VA, when friends of mine wanted to run for council, and I was trying to get absentee ballots from these two women, two sisters, all of them, I forget the other woman's name, which one, I'd have full files tomorrow again, but we did have a female nurse in France in World War One, and I will let the lady, the great granddaughter, whatever, I will let her know about telling your people tonight. Thank you very much for listening.
Good luck.
Bridgeville Louder? Thank you. Oh. Hello.
Hello.
I just have some information for each of you, I'm going to pass that down. If you don't remember me, I name is Ben Moore Beck, I am the library director of Bridgeville Public Library. It's what I thank you for always allowing us an opportunity to share information about the library. The information you're getting is specifically about some of our programming numbers and initiatives, as well as some of the financial information about the library. You know, as we approach the end of the year and begin looking towards 2019, it's always good to look back at what we've accomplished this year, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to share some of that with you, as, as the Borough is one of our most important stakeholders. One initiative I wanted to draw your attention to was through the Pennsylvania Library Association, they have an initiative called PA Forward, and it's all about identifying and implementing programs that support five key literacy. Most people when they think of the library, think of basic literacy, which is reading and writing, but they've also identified information literacy, civic and social literacy, health literacy, and financial literacy as areas of concern for citizens these days. So through that, we've worked to sort of expand and improve our programming this year for children in the summer. We had a very successful robotics class that was, in fact, it sold out so quickly, we offered, we were able to coordinate and offer second sessions for older students who were interested. Our Chum Library also created a kindergarten readiness class, specifically aimed at preschoolers, making them ready for kindergarten. For adults this month, we had a Ghost and Legends of Western Pennsylvania session, as well as soldiers and sailors' World War Two flip locker presentation. So those are just some examples, but the takeaway that I want to leave you with is that, thanks to all of this and a lot of hard work by our assistant director, Aaron Weaver, Bridgeville Library is now recognized as one of ten libraries in Allegheny County that is a Gold Star Library in the state of Pennsylvania. Beyond that, we obviously have a collection of materials that library, that patrons can check out. Currently, our collection consists of 21,611 items. So far this year at Bridgeville Library, we've circulated 62,707 items. So if you do some quick math, one way to look at it is that every item in our library is circulated three times this year. And as you may know, Pennsylvania requires by all public libraries that 12%, a 12% collection expense, so we're always looking at new opportunities to add new materials, and this is not, this is no longer limited to books. Just this year, through grants and donations, we were able to purchase almost fifty different games that are now available to circulate at the library. There's a variety of different role-playing and card games, and then those are also used to support a adult game night that we have once a month, in coordination with some of the other libraries throughout the county. There are also, I mentioned before at a previous meeting, we have hotspots to visit to circulate, which gives wireless access to patrons who may not otherwise have it. We have early literacy kits and American Girl Dolls, those are some of the highlights of the special items we have. And we're also extremely thankful that we have very active friends of the library group who work on our behalf to fundraise and promote our activities. Not only do they offer us a great deal of financial support, but also programming support. They've expanded some of the craft activities we're able to offer to patrons, and they also have a very successful cookbook club, which meets every other month at the library. Most recently, they had a Halloween party, a family-friendly Halloween party, and Mary Copeland was there with us, so thank you for attending. It was extremely successful, there were over three hundred people throughout the night that came to the library. So those are just some of the highlights, recent highlights. There's a lot of information in that packet, I'd be happy to go over more of it in more detail, but I will leave you to prove it. If you have questions, feel free to let any of us at the library know. And I just want to reiterate, you know, I'm the one that is talking tonight, but it takes a lot of hard work by a lot of individuals. We have a great staff at the library, some very dedicated board members, a lot of volunteers, and most of all, we have our patrons that really support us through and through every single day. And the last thing I'll just leave you with, in preparation for tonight, I asked some staff members, what, what thing sticks out for you for the library that you would want them to know, or what, what patron interaction have you had? And one that multiple staff members have said was about a local resident, he somewhat recently lost his wife, but she was a big library lover and big supporter, so at the urging of his children, he came to the library and tried to take, or did take, computer lessons, so that he would be more capable, now that he's by himself, unfortunately. So through that, he visited the library, took these computer lessons, and has really just developed a rapport with a lot of the staff members, and still comes in on a regular basis. And recently, he said to one of the staff members, you know, I always just thought that my wife and I would retire together and spend our days at the library, and he said, so I still come here just to think of her and because it makes me feel close to her. I just share that with you, because I think it really beautifully illustrates that at its core, the library is a safe, welcoming environment for all community members. So if you ever want to visit, you're always welcome, and if you ever have any opportunities or suggestions for things we can do to support the Borough, please do let us know, we are ready and willing to help. So thank you again for your time, I really appreciate it. Like I said, if you have any questions, we also have board members, I'm looking at the assistant director, Aaron, is here tonight. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the apartment? You may refer to the planning commission. If anyone, you know anything to say?
Really?
You have anything to say?
Andrew Collins?
I provide my report to the community, questions that I can answer.
Your business? Your business?
You know I always have something. On December eleventh, the Southwest Community Chamber has asked me to advertise that they are having their annual holiday luncheon at Nevillewood. It will be between eleven and one o'clock, and this is the second one that Mandy Prior will be at, so she understands how big of an event this is, and she's gone above and beyond, as she always does. And just to touch base, also, Fire Department, the Chamber, and Carnegie Fire Department are selling their Mega Bash tickets, twenty dollars per chance, and remember, it's twenty-five thousand dollar payout on Christmas, so please.
Is it Christmas or Christmas Eve?
Christmas, Christmas.
Twenty-fifth.
And so please sponsor your fire department, and just to add it on top of that, just based on some of the different stories that I've heard, consider doing your separate donations before the end of the year, especially to the fire department and to the EMS. I've had the privilege of being on the South, they had their Bridgeville South Vet Rotary, and Dennis came over and heard many, many things about, about the program, and they definitely need a lot of help as well. So if you're doing that, year-end donation consideration, think of them, as well as, we'll, we'll touch the library too, for some reason I'll probably get yelled at if I didn't say anything. That's all I have.
You also have your business. All right, we're on adjourning, we are in the second session. There's no action. There's no action, is what we're going to do. We're adjourning, the second?
Second. And there is, if, and I'm, I'm having an executive session regarding personal matters.
Yes. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, everybody. You're closed.